Call the City Council Meeting for CDB's Grand Forks, Wednesday, July 5th, 2023. City Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Reapel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Ben Pakshavinsky.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Brian Larson. Karen Peterson.
Here.
Does turn and quorum, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Open forum and opportunity for members to public to address the City Council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff, boards, or commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. And then here to address the City Council, I see none. Move on to approval minutes for June 13th work session, June 20th council meeting, and minute summary of June 27th closed meeting. Move. By Helms, second.
By Reapel?
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yeah.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Scheduled lead hearings, there is none. Scheduled public hearings, number four, public hearings on proposed moratorium prohibiting the sale, testing, manufacturing, cultivating, growing, transporting, delivery, and distribution of cannabis products to collect public comments. Make a motion, open a public hearing. Move. Who moved by Reapel?
Second.
Second by Vetter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion is carried.
I mean, I can address this. Essentially, this is the legislation that came out recently, I guess, and took place, or takes place, July 1st. It's regarding the, potentially the distribution of marijuana in the cities. The legislation allows for a city to put a moratorium on the sale of those products when it does come out for up to two years. And it's so that we can figure out time, place, and manner issues, where they could be located, if they need to be within a certain distance or not from schools, those types of things. So at this point in time, there was a notice that was published along with the potential interim matter for public comment if they wanted us to enact this interim ordinance for a moratorium.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have anything? Not move, make a motion to go out of public hearing? Move. Move by Reapel?
Second.
Second by Helms. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion is carried. Move on to the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items be pulled from consent agenda for discussion in action if they choose. And then want the five through nine pulled. If not, entertain a motion five through nine, please.
Move.
Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Reapel. Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Acknowledged and received reports, officers, boards, and commissions. Regular meeting minutes for Water, Light, Power, and Building Commission for June 7th, 2023, and the city financial statements of May 31st, 2023. Communication, the point bridge will be closed traffic starting Thursday, July 13th, starting at 6:00 a.m., and will remain closed until Monday, July 17th at 6:00 a.m. So repair work can be completed. Move on to old business, there is none. New business, number 13, consider adopting resolution number 23-07-43 approving and adopting a 2050 plan update to long-range transportation plan bike and pedestrian element of the East Grand Forks Comprehensive Plan. Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Vetter. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 14, consider adopting resolution 23-07-44 directing the city engineer to prepare plans and specifications for 2023 city project number five for sidewalk and multi-use trail, excuse me, extensions. Move. Move by Reapel.
Second.
Second by Helms. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 15, consider proving additional concrete work to be completed with the Fourth Street Northeast project and allowing additional work to be assessed for Folsom Farms contention upon the company signing off on whether agreeing to pay the additional assessment. Is there a motion? Move. Move by Reapel.
Second.
Second by Helms. Mr. Emery.
So last week at the work session, what I'd brought forward was Folsens had requested some additional concrete work right at the intersection of Fourth Street and what used to be Eighth Avenue there to minimize that dip. Once we got the concrete work in, I relooked at it with Folsen, just with some changes made there. The dip wasn't as severe as, you know, we thought it was going to be. So Folsens thought it wasn't, you know, worth $40,000 to eliminate the little bit of dip there was going to be. With that said, there is a driveway just to the west of that Eighth Avenue North, or North intersection that they would like to have the city consider paying for. It's about a 20-foot driveway. The cost is approximately about $10,000 versus $40,000. So with your permission, we would just do that one driveway in lieu of, you know, kind of that entire intersection of Fourth and Eighth.
Those special assessments, right, though?
And, yeah, still adding it to their specials, the $10,000, yep.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Helms?
You said they were asking the city to pay for it. We're just going to pay for it, and then they're going to be assessed for it, though, right?
Yeah, they, yeah, yep, that's correct. The $10,000 would just be added to their specials.
And the rest of that Fourth Street there coming to the west, up to Fifth there, you know, I was out there the other day looking, there's some pretty bad spots there yet that we're not really touching. Is that?
Well, we're not. And if you remember, when we held the improvement hearing, we were proposing to go all the way to Fifth Avenue Northeast there. But A&amp;L Potato had showed up in the meeting, didn't want that done. So we basically shortened up the project because of the, you know, the property owner there not wanting to pay for it, so.
Yeah, I remember that, but I'm just saying that I think it looks like down the road, we're probably going to end up doing some more there because.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
I bet you, by the time they get done driving over that thing, it's not going to last too long, so.
No, I agree.
Okay.
Mr. Golstead?
Yes, Mr. President. This isn't setting precedence by allowing them to pay for it by special assessment. Since the city has a paving project going on, we've done it a number of different times with other private property owners. And then we also have done it a number of times with the different lead pipe through water and light or sidewalk projects. So as long as we have a project going on, the council approves of it, they sign an agreement that it can go along with the special assessments, there's no issues with following this process.
Thank you, sir. Any bells have anything? Roll call, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 16, consider adopting resolution 23-07-45 approving hiring of Vanessa Richter as a police officer of salary 3268 per hour. Is there a motion?
I'll second.
Who moved? Helms? Second by Reapel. Questions or discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Do you want to say, Chief Headland, appreciate the work that you're doing at going through this process and finding really good and qualified applicants to bring into our police department. Looking forward to not overloading your folks anymore with overtime and all of that. So congratulations on another hire. Looks like a good one. Thanks.
Any bells have anything? Roll call, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 17, consider adopting resolution 23-07-46 declaring the billboard located at by the pool permit 25727 be declared as legal and considered conforming. Should write these, and I know what I'm going to say. Move. Reapel moved? There's a second.
Second.
Second by Vetter. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Helms?
Did you have something, Helms?
I, I, I was just going to make a comment that I was out looking at that sign. I want to make a special trip to look at that thing. And it's like, I remember seeing it there, but it's pretty hard to see now. There's a lot of trees around it. So we're going to have to do some work there, obviously. And I'm sure that's what the state was getting at, too. Also, I'm guessing, right?
No, because it was on city park property. That's the reason they don't want to get, so.
So.
End up new to trees, but go ahead, Megan.
No?
Mayor?
Sorry, will that be our parks folks cleaning those trees out of there, or will it be Public Works or combination thereof? Just curious.
Do you want to volunteer?
I, I got a chainsaw.
Jason, if you know more about it, feel free to come up. But that may need, may need some more research. I've actually asked if we could go trim those trees, and previously been told it's not our responsibility because it's DOT right away. So it'd be up to the DOT, as far as I understand it. So that's the.
Who's been telling you no?
Well, Mr. Murphy at the time.
So let's.
That's why I said it would need some research. Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a couple of years ago.
I'd say if we can do it, we will do it. I don't know if we will have an obligation to do it, but I think we're going to want to do it if nobody else steps up.
And make sure that we do everything that we want to do there, not just.
That we have authority to do it.
Frame around there or something.
Yeah.
Okay, is anybody else before I go to Megan this time?
Thank you.
One once. Megan, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
No.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 18, consider proving ordinance number 34 for a series in ordinance regulating the burning of solid fuels and external solid fuel-fired heating devices and adopting by reference code, city code, chapter 1, and section 10.99, which among other things contain penalty provisions. First reading. Move. Move by Vetter.
Second.
Second by Reapel. Questions or discussion?
If I may?
Yes, sir.
If you recall, this was the request of the council. There was a thought about having the solid fuel heating devices. After the thought of it, we indicated that we didn't want to have them within the city limits. So this actually prohibits to having them in the city limits. If they're, if somebody already has one, that's, it turns it into a non-conforming use. And then if they ever stop using it, it has to be removed.
Thank you, sir. Any bells have anything?
Thank you.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 19, consider approving the ordinance number 35 for a series interim ordinance prohibiting the sale, testing, manufacturing, cultivating, growing, transport, and delivery, and distribution of cannabis products in the CDB's Grand Forks. First reading. Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Reapel. Questions or discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 20, discussion of city's, I can't even talk tonight, holy cow. Discussion of city administrator position process. I think Liza's on the.
Hi, am. Good evening, Council President, Mayor Gander, members of the council. I just want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes.
Yes.
And first, you'll have to excuse me. Some reason I cannot get my camera to work tonight, so I can see you all perfectly well. But I just wanted to provide an update. As of last week at our council workshop, we talked about next steps as two out of the four candidates withdrew from the invitation to interview. I had offered three options last week, of which the council took very careful consideration of. The first was to potentially go deeper into the semifinalists list to offer an opportunity for an invitation. And then options two and three were a matter of when to repost and what that could potentially look like. I did contact four of the remaining semifinalists, and as of Monday morning, I found that none of the remaining four semifinalists have interest in being considered for an interview at this time. So in laying out options two and three, if we did a fairly quick turnaround and reposted the position, we could be advertising as early as July 13th with interviews scheduled on September 18th and of candidate being in the chair by October, end of October. Option three, we put a pause in reposting, allow the market to turn itself over. We would begin advertising in September with interviews on November 13th and a candidate in the chair by end of December. And I listed out risks for each of those options. And of, to include and to consider as part of those risks is the potential of your two remaining candidates that, you know, accepted an invitation to interview, that they potentially, may potentially not want to move forward in either of the other two options. So with that, I do have an additional option for the council to consider, and that would be to still pursue interviewing to the two remaining candidates and consider whether those candidates would be a good fit for the council. But that's why I'm here. I'd look forward to hearing maybe some discussion and how you would like to move forward in the process.
Any questions, comments you'd like to make at this time? Mr. Helms?
Last week at our work session, we talked about moving ahead with option two for a quick turnaround on reposting immediately. I'd like to see us do that. The other thing I'd like to see on that, if, say if we had another 20 candidates, and Liza, if you narrowed it down for us, that's great, but I would like the council to be able to see who the other candidates are that we didn't see this last time. There might be one involved in there somewhere or something, but might catch somebody's eye on the council that would like to maybe see them or interview them. I'm not saying that if we could just get the information on them so we could look them over, I'd like to see that happen.
Yes, sir.
I am concerned that number two would simply drag out the timeline and not bring any change to the equation. We had a great field of individuals, and the contractor that we have here is very capable and, for pretty strong reasons, did not bring forward other names that could have been brought forward. And so I'm not confident at all that we would see any increase or really new opportunity to bring someone in. We would only push this out another one, two, three, four months, five months, and, and probably frustrate everyone in the process. So I think number two is really a bad idea. I would actually favor three or four.
Anybody else have any comments? Mr. Vetter?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm also in favor of option two. I don't have a problem going with option three, either option two or option three. There might be some validity to holding a little bit and going with option three and not advertising right away. I also agree with Mr. Helms that I want to see all the applicants when they come in. And I think the council should whittle it down to the semifinalists, and then David Dronins can do their internal check and do the interviews for those finalists, and then come back to us again. And we'll, out of the finalists, then we'll pick the top four that we want to interview. But I would like to see all the applicants to begin with and select the semifinalists, whether we do option two or three.
Any bells? Mr. Mayor?
I see why the front end of this can be done in a more narrow way, that is, by the contractor. There are going to be a lot of detailed bits of information that could be considered that wouldn't be appropriate to share publicly. And so there should be some front-end work to initially reduce the field in a, in a more private way, so as not to hurt the reputation of these folks. So I guess that's the, to me, the justification for starting out with a narrower focus is there's so much privileged information that is shared on, in this process, that, that should be kept as confidential as possible if it would render them not a good applicant.
Any else have any comments? Mr. Pakshavinsky?
I actually like option four. I think, you know, a six-month trial period would be good. DDA is providing their two-year guarantee either way if it doesn't work out. And we wouldn't be dragging this out much further. It seems like I'm in the minority on the council for that. However, I don't think option three is viable at all. And I agree with the mayor on option two. I think DDA should do the elimination of some semifinalists.
Any else have any comments? Mr. Helms?
Thank you. The problem I have with option four is if we do that six-month trial thing, it might be pretty difficult and pretty hard to move somebody out of that position if we're not happy. That kind of bothers me a little bit. I just, I can't see a six-month trial and then when that's up, say, sorry, you're no good. You're out of here. We're going to find somebody else. I don't like that. You're talking about moving quickly. Option three is, is carrying it out further than option two is. And I think, you know, like I said last week, we voted to go ahead with option two. I think we owe it to the city to, to do that. I think we owe it to the city and, and our people to not just jump into this quickly. I think we need to do it the right way. It's an important position, and we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Any comments? Karen?
So are we coming up with a contingency plan if two doesn't work?
What?
If two doesn't work, if we're taking this out to September, and then we're back in the same situation?
If two doesn't work, you mean like more candidates, you mean?
Right.
Well, we got that problem with three also. And so I just, I, I just think we're moving quickly. I think we need to make sure that we're doing the right way.
Anything else, Karen? My, my, my opinion on this, I know we looked at these last week, and I think you're not in the minority, Ben. Option four, but I don't like the six-month deal. For one, a couple of reasons why. If we're going to move somebody out of a position they're currently holding at city level, we need to fill that position also, that they're vacating. So it'd be unwise to all of a sudden wait six months to fill something in that position. We need that person to concentrate on their job they're doing, they were hired to do, and give them a chance to prove themselves that they can do their job, not hold down two jobs and try to balance that. It's not fair to them. It's not fair to the candidates. I sat back and thought about this, and I have the same thoughts as Karen. What if we could do option two or option three, and we get down to the end and throughout the same issue? I personally would like to go to option four, remove the language that would say six-month trial, and move forward, and then start the process to hire, to fill that vacated position. I would like to move forward to do the interviews, the two internals. Ms. Reapel?
When Ben Senni was in the minority, you weren't. I'm thinking, I was thinking the same thing. It's really hard to give someone a position and say, well, you're going to carry on and do the other one at the same time, because we can't hire somebody just in case. I think we have to have the confidence to go ahead and just say, whoever we hire, job's yours. Now you got to perform. And then we go ahead and put the other one out as, and hire.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Mayor?
Just for the record, Mr. Helms, when I said what I said as to my preference, I'm not in any way trying to rush this. In fact, by favoring option three over option two, I'm saying I want to do it right. I don't care if we do it in a month, or three months, or six months. I'm just interested that we do it right. And if we have an expectation of how it's going to go in one way, and we don't like that outcome, we shouldn't take one step down that road. So that's why I would favor three over two. It feels like you're doing it right. Or I also like four very much. I think we have two really good people who have made it clear that they are interested. And I think our bigger problem is going to be to decide which of these two very good people we would choose. That's going to be our bigger problem. Two very, very qualified applicants.
I know on our agenda has discussion on here, but Mr. Golstead, is it possible for us to make a motion to which way we want to go and then go from there?
I think you could make a motion on which way you wanted to go, because you're trying to figure out that aspect of it. You wouldn't make that selection right now.
Right, correct, I know.
Correct.
I'll make, I'll make the motion in an option four with the removal of the language of the six months. I would just say, we interviewed two candidates, removed the six months probationary period, and then go on from there. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Reapel seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, I'll take roll call.
Helms?
Go.
Holstead?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
No.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Liza, if you want to proceed and work with Terry on setting.
Select an interview day?
Correct.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, everyone.
Move on to claims. Twenty-one, consider authorizing interim city administrator issued payment or recommended bills in payroll. Move. Move by Vetter?
Second by Reapel. Well, any questions or discussion?
Roll call, please.
Helms?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yeah.
Pakshavinsky?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Gander?
Thanks, Mr. President. In the last few weeks, I've had occasion to attend several functions with the Grand Forks Air Force Base. The first of those functions was the change of command ceremony, where Colonel Curry relinquished command of the 319th Reconnaissance Wing to Colonel Monroe. Then Colonel Monroe, Chief Master Sergeant Vogel, Council President Holstead, along with Senator Mark Johnson and I, met and visited for a couple of hours, just hoping to set the agenda for the next couple of years on how we as a community can partner with them, what they can do for us, back and forth. Then finally went to the retirement ceremony for Colonel Curry this past Thursday. And at that ceremony, Colonel Monroe came straight over and said, that was the best community meeting I've ever had in one of my communities that I served. Both he and Chief Master Sergeant Vogel, his, his crew chief, this was their first choice of where to come as to their new command post that they'll be. They're so excited to be here. And what they've made it very clear is the relationship that we as a community have with the Air Force Base, in this case, the Grand Forks Air Force Base, can make a big difference in the morale of the airmen out there. So if you see these airmen, and, you know, you can, you can kind of tell, maybe they're in uniform, or maybe you have a chance to visit with them, be sure to thank them for their service. You know, whether we run into them in our stores, restaurants, churches, schools, wherever it might be, make sure they know how much we appreciate them. And if they're in your neighborhood, you know, reach out, and if somebody gets deployed, and you can help with snow, or lawn, or whatever it might be. These are the ways that we can show our appreciation. And of course, we're going way beyond that as well. As a city and as an air force base, we have a lot of connections directly back and forth. So I guess on the heels of the Fourth of July, and thinking about what we can do for the base, for the airmen, ultimately for our national security, it, it comes right down to that. The, the quality of life that these airmen have while stationed here at the Grand Forks Air Force Base is greatly affected by this community. And it, and that also greatly affects their preparedness to do what it is that we're asking them to do. And so I guess I challenge each one of us to think of how we can enrich the lives of our airmen stationed out there. Thanks.
Mr. Vetter?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Pakshavinsky?
Nothing today, thanks.
Mr. Reapel?
Just curious, Megan, maybe you can answer. Did we get our audit off, or I thought that was due on the first or something?
It was due on the 30th, and I will have to reach out and get confirmation that it was submitted.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Helms?
Nothing, thanks.
Ms. Peterson?
Nothing.
Mr. Golstead?